Welcome you to this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming and being a part of this. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a citizens advisory group at the city council. They're charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the P&amp;Z Commission are recorded for record retention and transcription. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to these items on the agenda. Any person who wishes, or any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. Agenda item number one, oral call and disclosure of conflicts of interest, ex parte communications and site visit. Disclose who was talked to, the basic substance of the conversation, and whether the conversation had any influence. Disclose if there's anything personally or professionally that would not allow an impartial or unbiased decision. Disclose if a site visit was done, the locations of the visit, and what was seen. Okay? And Aisling, would you do the roll call for us?
Jared Burnt.
My name is Jared Burnt. I live in the Highland area. I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing to report.
Jill Kirkham.
My name is Jill Kirkham. I live in the Alameda area, and I have, I did not make any site visits, and I have nothing to report.
Jack Moore.
My name is Jack Moore, and I live in the Old Town area. I did site visits to Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing else to report.
Dorothy Ricks.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Ricks. I live in the Alameda area. I too made site visits to Area Four, or excuse me, Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing else to report.
Shin Kiu-Ru.
My name is Shin Kiu-Ru. I live in the Highland area. I have made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing else to report.
Kaylee White.
My name is Kaylee White. I live in the Alameda area. I have made a site visit to Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, and Six, and I have nothing further to report.
And Brian Satterfield, just excuse me.
Very good. Alright, so now we are on to Agenda Item Number Three. The time has been set aside for the
Do you want to do Agenda Item Two of the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, folks. Agenda Item Number Two, approval of the minutes. The commission may wish to approve the minutes for the clarification and regular meeting of January 22nd.
February 26th, that's incorrect.
Okay, so that's, that's not my fault. February 26th, okay. And would you do the roll call again, Aisling?
No, no.
Good, thank you.
Someone needs to make a motion.
Someone needs to make a motion.
I'm going to have to approve the minutes from the prior meeting.
I would like to second that.
All those in favor?
Now we do the roll call.
Aisling, would you please do the roll call?
Keely?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes ma'am.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Lu?
Yes.
Motion carries.
If I may say something, please.
Sure.
Just so that you all understand, I'm new at this. I know it's hard for you to figure that out, but I'm really new at this. And so I'd ask that you would, you know, just be a little, what is the term?
Patient?
Patient, that's a good term, thank you. Be a little patient with me, and I promise that I'll get it, okay? Thank you. Alright, so now we go on to Agenda Item Number Three, the public hearing for annexation. The time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding requests by Ryan and Carol Hancock and McCormick Ranch Limited Liability Corp., represented by RMES, for the annexation and zoning of .51 acres, more or less, of land west of the future Trail Creek Estates, Division Four. Okay? And
So now we need to open it for public hearing.
Give me three seconds.
Okay. So I'm opening this for public hearing?
I've opened this for public hearing.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying at 600 East Oak. Hopefully I can make this short and simple. As you heard, Trail Creek Estates, Division Four, I believe at your last meeting, and approved that project. What we're talking about here is just a few little remnant pieces. So when the property was acquired, there was some gaps between in ownership and things in there that were just kind of getting cleaned up. And so that, in conjunction with a little trade parcel that is happening with Mr. Hancock to kind of provide him some access to his lot. His lot is located in this, his home, his existing home's located here, and so we're providing a spot within that plat to provide him access that you guys saw before, but it's right in, it's right in this location here. And so if you look at the drawing, these pink areas were kind of left in between, kind of no man's land there, and that's, that's what we're proposing to annex. It really doesn't add additional lots, or additional land, or anything to the, or additional units to the Trail Creek project. It's just straightening out the lots, and then again, providing a little bit of a, kind of an opportunity for some access and things to Mr. Hancock. So that's, that's what we're talking about. Should be fairly simple, and hopefully you guys will see the merits of it. I certainly could answer any questions if you have them. Otherwise, we think it's pretty consistent with the plan, and overall should be approved in conjunction with that subdivision.
Okay, so now I ask if there's any questions beforehand, and if not, then call the staff.
Okay. Are there any questions?
From the commission.
From the commission? Alright, no more questions or calls, so now we'll call the staff. Thank you, Carl.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello Planning Department, for the record. As noted in the agenda described by the applicant, you have before you for consideration an annexation request to annex and zone .51 acres, more or less, of land located west of the future Trail Creek Estates, Division One. The request has been submitted by Brian Baldwin, McCormick Ranch LLC, and Ryan and Carol Hancock. The representative listed on the application is Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. The annexation request is in statutory compliance with the Idaho State Code as a Category A annexation, which allows annexations to take place where all private landowners have consented to annexation. The subject property is within the area of city impact and lies contiguous to city lands. Per city code, as land is annexed and zoned, it shall be given a comprehensive plan and zoning district designation based on the provisions of City of Section 17.01.130 in the Plan Designation and Zoning District Conversion Chart, this title, and the review criteria listed in subsection 1702.180 of this chapter. Per staff's analysis as detailed in the staff report, the comprehensive plan designation of residential and a zoning designation of residential low density is appropriate for the subject property and compatible with the adjacent zoning in the surrounding area. All property owners within 300 feet of the land to be annexed have been provided notice and notice also published in the ISA Journal and posted on the property. To date, no public comment has been received. Upon review of the request as detailed in the staff report, staff finds the proposal is compliant with all municipal and state code requirements. Should the commission recommend approval of the subject annexation, staff recommends the conditions listed in the staff report be attached. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to stand for questions.
Any questions? Okay, is there any written correspondence?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll hear testimony by those who support the application, if any. Would you please stand and state your name?
Did you read the rules regarding?
Oh, I read the rules.
No, 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 no. So you need to explain
Okay.
It is here.
Thank you. Here is the explanation of the hearing procedures by the chair. A ten-minute limit on application presentation, three-minute limit on public testimony. Names and addresses are required for those who are presenting and testifying. Questions, comments should be addressed to the commission. Commission members must make their decision regarding the application on facts already in the record and information presented at the public hearing. Conflicts of interest, site visits, and ex parte contacts by commission members will be acknowledged. Protocol requires that commission members and the audience be recognized by the commission chair prior to speaking. Okay, so, young lady, would you please indicate for the record?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello.
Could you speak up just a little?
Nikki Taysom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I am in favor, and I just wanted to validate those purple pieces are going to just add to the rest of the pieces, right? And that borders the boundary of the property.
Please, would you address the commission? I didn't hear a word you said.
I'm sorry. I was asking if the purple parts, we're going to just extend the rest of those lots and even up the outside line along the contour line?
Yes.
That's the point there. Thank you. So yes, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Alright, anyone else? No one at this time? Alright, are there any other items in regards to this particular motion? Oh, Carl, would you please come up and state the position of the staff? No? Close enough, huh?
Carl Anderson again, for the record. Just as a point of clarification, it's typically customary to open the hearing up to those in favor, and those in neutral, and those opposed, providing opportunity for each. That's all.
Okay, shall we do that now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Remember, patience is a good thing. Okay, alright.
Are there any neutral?
Are there any neutral constituents who would like to speak at this point? None? Okay, let's take all those in favor.
Are there any opposed?
Is there?
Oh, we have to get all in favors first?
No.
Okay, are there any opposed?
Mitch wants to come up and do a rebuttal to the questions, or like talk about her.
Mitch? No?
There is no either.
Okay, having said that, let's just say I'm thoroughly confused now.
It's okay.
Alright, so now at this point, let's see, we need to go back to closing this portion of the meeting.
To closing the hearing?
Closing the hearing, yes.
And now we hit the gavel, right?
This part I know. Now it's closed, that portion of the meeting is closed, and we will go back to the next one.
Let's move into discussion.
Alright, is it, are there any, at this particular time we opened up discussion, is there any individual who would care to make a
Motion?
Motion one way or the other?
As for discussion, I think this is a great application because it will clarify and it will provide equal lot size across different lots, and I feel that's appropriate, and thank the applicant for the timely submission of it in order to move forward. So therefore, I, that's my
You move. Do you want to make a motion?
Is there any other people who have any discussion items? Yes, I would like to make a motion. So I recommend approval of the application. I motion to recommend approval of the application from Brian Baldwin of McCormick Ranch Limited Liability Company, and Ryan and Carol Hancock to annex the subject property. To be zoned residential low density, the comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential was requested. Finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapter 17.02.110 and 17.02.120 of Pocatello Municipal Code, as long as the following conditions that are outlined by the staff are met.
And to have authorized
And to authorize the chair to sign off. Once, once
Is there a second?
I second it.
Alright, Aisling, would you please call roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. And we go on to Agenda Item Number Four. Public hearing planned unit development. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Jonathan Vincent of Gate City Builders, represented by RMES, for the construction of the Breezy apartment planned unit development located south of Quinn Road and east of Philbin Road. And again?
So you're going to open it up for public hearing?
We'll open it up for public hearing at this particular time. Now explanation of hearing procedure by the chair. There'll be ten, ten-minute limit on applicant presentation, three, three-minute limit on public testimony. The names and the addresses are required for those presenting or testifying, and questions, comments should be addressed to the commission. Commission members must make their decision regarding the applicant, application on facts already in the record and information presented at the public hearing. Conflicts of interest, site visits, and ex parte contacts by the commission members will be acknowledged. Protocol requires that the commission members and audience be recognized by the commission chair prior to speaking. Okay, I'll open the agenda items, we did that. So we declare this a public, open public hearing.
Oh, you already did
Pardon?
You already did that.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Never, never. Alright, presentation by the applicant. Alright, so we'll go hear the presentation by, by the applicant. Sorry.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Brady Smith, Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho. Here tonight representing the applicant, Jonathan Vincent, on the project, who actually is here as well, if you guys end up having any additional questions that might be more suitable to the owner. I'll try to keep this fairly brief. I know I have ten minutes, but I'll try to give you the information in less. How's that? So just to give you kind of a bird's eye view of where this is at, many of you are probably familiar with the Breezy subdivision that's located off of Philbin Road. This is just northeast of that, just south of Quinn Road, not quite to Philbin. And around 2015, this project actually came through under a different owner, Brandon Ratliff actually at the time, and we had this project entitled in much the same manner that it's laid out here, with the exception of some of the building configurations, which I'll get to in a minute. But we had it entitled through the same exact PUD pre-plat process, and then actually onto a full-blown design. For whatever the reason, that project was shelved for some time, and everything expired. So we're back with a new owner who's actually really trying to take that idea, carry it forward, and continue with that generally the same plan. But one of the allowances that the PUD offers us is to actually provide an alternative method and a meaning behind what we're doing different than maybe the previous application that was approved by city staff in the past, and that is, I'll bring up the pre-plat here, it's a little easier to see, but you'll notice that on these particular, well, I wanted to show you this one originally so you could kind of see what we had, and I think that might help you understand a little bit of where we were and where we're at now. So in the previous version that was approved back in 2015, all of the buildings were separated individually. Now, if you look at what we have, there are much the same configurations except for we have joined several of the units with a two-hour firewall, and we've gotten rid of the setbacks required in between those. One of the things that we're asking for is that those lot lines stay in place just as they were before, that would actually go through that firewall line. So it's a little bit different, it's not typically done that way, and still allowed to be on its own lot. But what we're asking is that that be looked at as a, an alternative method to our plan here. Alternatively, if this were all on its own lot instead of five individual lots, you'd have the same product, and that's what we're asking you to look at, is, you know, we could do it a different way, get the same product, but it's much harder if you look at it in terms of financing and other things for investors that come in and look to do these types of projects to be able to buy a couple of units versus eighteen, or whatever, if everything was on lot. In this case, an investor would have to come in and, you know, put money down on five units, and maybe he only wants to do two. So we're trying to give that, that market some flexibility. It's really important to the project that this layout work, because the owner, who again is here to explain if you have any further questions, went to some great length to come in and kind of talk to the building department and the planning staff as well as engineering, just to kind of go over some of the options there and if it were possible. So we're hoping that, you know, we will see that in terms of our, our means of that alternative method that's offered within the PUD process. Other than that, the parking, the utilities, the open space is, is essentially unchanged as, as compared to what was there, you know, back in 2015. So again, we aren't really looking to do anything else, you know, aesthetically in terms of how that's all going to look. The parking count is more than what's required. I think we have 158 spaces, we need 144, so we're good there. We've got more open space than what's required within the requirements. One thing I will mention is we're doing this is, you probably read something in the report about lot size averaging, so although our lot sizes individually are less than the minimum required by the underlying code, if you look at the entire development and then divide that out by our units, we are actually within that lot size averaging range. So with that, I guess that's pretty much the big meat and potatoes of what the bigger issues are as far as the changes that might have been made from a previous approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commission, do you have any questions?
I actually, can I ask a question?
Certain.
I can ask now, or I can ask later, yes, after. So for the two-hour firewall, and you said that's the only thing that has changed from the previous application?
Yes, and as those setbacks have actually gone away on those joint buildings. So prior to that, they had, you know, a separation of, you know, a breezeway between them.
Is there any safety concerns that we should be aware of, or?
So that's where the two-hour firewall comes in, is by the building department, is for that very, you know, reason, so that it's separated. You'll see that with twin homes, other things like that, very similar to that, although these are fourplexes, three-bedroom fourplexes, the idea is the same. So I think that, that is what that's intended to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Alright, can we hear from the planning staff now? Thank you, Brady, I appreciate it.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Carl Anderson in City of Pocatello Planning Department. The request you have before you for consideration tonight is for the planned unit development, for a planned unit development to facilitate the subdivision of the Breezy apartment apartments. This application has been submitted by Jonathan Vincent of Gate City Builders with a purchase-sell agreement with a property owner listed as Brandon Ratliff. The engineer listed on the application is Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. Property is located east of Philbin Road and south of Quinn Road, and encompasses 3.72 acres, more or less. This development will be accessed from Quinn Road. The proposed subdivision is owned residential high-density, and the PUD will be followed by a subdivision application. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into 23 total lots, including 18 residential lots, and the remaining five of which will be dedicated for common area. The common areas will provide for parking, open space, and stormwater retention. The RH zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 1452 square feet per multifamily dwelling unit, thus 5,808 square feet is required outright per lot. As proposed, each building will meet the required 10-foot front and rear setback. Unique to this development is the applicant is proposing that each multifamily fourplex building share a common wall, and located on individual lots. Staff recommends that the side yard setback not be required. As proposed, they will be separated by a two-hour firewall, and if located on one lot, the same configuration would be possible, taking advantage of the alternative method of development provision within the PUD. If the project were not subdivided into separate lots and located on one parcel land, the project would meet the minimum lot size requirement outright. The applicant is proposing to utilize lot size averaging for this development. As previously stated, the minimum lot size is 5,808 square feet at four units per lot. The total area incorporated in the planned unit development is 3.72 acres, or 1,626 square feet, more or less. The applicant, application is proposing to a total of 18 fourplex apartment units on each individual lot, or for, of one fourplex on each individual lot, for a total of 72 dwelling units in total. Therefore, a minimum lot size required for the development as a whole is 1,4,544 square feet, and the total area within the project exceeds that amount. When taken into total lots of the subdivision, including all common areas, the minimum lot size on average would be 6,364 square feet, where the RH zoning district also allows a maximum of 30 units per acre, and the total permitted for the site total is 98 units, and the total proposed is 72 units. Past practice for lot size averaging for a PUD has indicated that lot size averaging may include the common area of the project into the lot size average calculation. The required parking spaces for the proposed development is 144 parking spaces, and the applicant is providing 158 within lot 22 of Block 1 of the Breezy apartment subdivision. In consideration of the application and proposed development, staff concludes that the PUD request is compliant with Pocatello's proposed 1702.140. Should the commission recommend approval of this subject application, staff recommends the conditions listed in the staff report be included. All noticing requirements have been met, and staff has heard from three members of the public. The only piece of correspondence received was a legal description for a potential easement along the eastern boundary of the property, and staff is recommending a condition be added to the subdivision to address that following this agenda item, should this be approved. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Has there been any additional correspondence received?
Just the three members of the public.
Thank you. Alright, now we'll hear testimony of those who are supporting the application. Please come forth to the mic and state your name, and why you're, you're making your support. Anyone? Okay, let's hear testimony from those uncommitted on the application.
My name is Robert Price. I live at 1779 West Quinn, on the adjacent property to proposed subdivision, or apartment complex. A couple of things I just wanted to address, mainly was the easement. We have a legal description of an easement that runs along the west side of our property, east of this proposed development that didn't show up on the description that we got, we just wanted to make sure that that was taken into account, and that the city would honor that easement to be put in. That easement was put in about 10, 12 years ago, when Brandon Ratliff, to help Brandon Ratliff. The other concern I'd like the city to be aware of is the traffic congestion on Quinn Road. If you guys don't know, you said you went out there and you took a look at it. Hopefully you drove through the Hawthorne-Twin intersection around between 4 and 6. I don't know if you've driven out there, but the city really needs to take into consideration what you're going to do with that, the congestion at that specific intersection. what you're going to do with that, the congestion at that specific intersection, and then the intersection at the, at Quinn and Philbin as well. Quinn and Philbin is a more dangerous intersection in my opinion because that's a thorough through. Philbin does not have a stop sign, Quinn does, especially in the mornings or the evenings when the sun's low on the horizon. It's hard to see traffic moving 45 miles an hour up and down Philbin Road when you're trying to get from Quinn to Philbin. So I'd like to the city to address the congestion issues. The other congestion issue, when you look at this map, it'd be on my left, the driveway that goes out onto Quinn Road, if you're coming up Quinn Road from, so you'd be driving from the west to the east, if you've driven out there, that comes up a hill. I'm concerned about the sideline. If you were to pull out of that, well, if the car is coming up the hill, there'd be enough distance, specifically in that case in the morning, when the morning, the sun's very low, when you get onto Quinn, it's hard to see directions, specifically in the summertime, just due to the orientation of the sun and the road. So some congestion issues, we'd like to just make sure the city's aware of. Hopefully you guys can think through the congestion that, that. Quinn has turned into a major thrill fryer mainly because since Connor Academy's been built, it just seems like everybody decides Quinn's the way to get to that. It just is what it is. The other issue that I, I wanted to bring up is the description we have doesn't have any fencing included. We have livestock fencing around our place. I own the livestock facility next to it. We, I bring in horses, specifically wild horses. I rescue wild horses off the Wyoming desert. These horses, when I bring them in, are not kid-friendly. They're not safe for, for general public, and I just want to make sure we don't have any young kids getting, getting to them. So we will keep our, our property livestock fenced. Livestock fencing and childhood fencing are not the same thing. Like an opens, an open chain link fence works great for kids. It's very dangerous for horses. They can stick their foot through it, break a leg, all kinds of problems. We do have chain link around the one side where the churches, they put in slats that works fine. I'm not concerned about what type of fencing, just to say fencing that we don't have kids coming and getting into things that they can't be into. We also have about six or seven acres of hay ground, so I have swathers and balers and just equipment that we worry about unattended children getting into trouble by coming onto the property without some type of restrictive fencing keeping them, keeping them off the property. I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others who wish to test, test, have testimony to uncommitted? No one? Okay. Let's hear from all the opponents to the application, if any. Please state your name.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I was going to see, could you guys bring up that picture that had the other housing lower in that building, that big building, the church?
I oppose this. I oppose PUD zoning because a lot of times, yeah, because a lot of times that is kind of lazy fair development, anything goes, and especially with the size of the property and how much housing is going to go on there. I'm concerned with the city having enough water and sewer ability to handle that as well as traffic. And I wasn't sure if those were homes or if those were like apartment complexes in this lower part by that big field. Are those actual homes?
Can I get you to speak up?
Are those actual homes or are they also like apartments or townhouses?
Are you talking about the southeast? Those are homes, I believe.
Okay, because you can't really tell from the sky. My, my point was if they were townhomes, that means there's more people in those facilities. And I'm also concerned about the traffic, especially with Connor Academy, and now you're going to be putting a lot more people out onto that roadway and other areas or traffic like that, and it's a nightmare. I'm all for development, but we're pushing more and more people into high-density housing and government utilities, mass, you know, transportation problems. And with the children, it is a concern. The ones over by the Portnoy Library, those children are always climbing the fence into people's backyards. They're breaking people's fences. They're leaving garbage everywhere. And again, that's going to be another factor when you have large groups of people. How are you going to maintain the garbage and snow removal, those basic situations? Let's see. And again, with the size of the property, I think that's a lot of people to jam into a small space. And also is there, since they're going to be able to be individually sold, is there going to be any kind of homeowners association? Who's going to be maintaining the lands? What kind of rules are going to apply? I mean, if everybody, if every one of those has a different owner, are they going to be able to have their own rules? What's done with the, the landscape around it? Because I've seen that before where there's four, I mean, fourplexes, three units owned by different people. These guys kept it nice. This one was absolutely trashed and this one was kind of in between. And so that takes down somebody else's property value or not. And so those are some of the other things. And same thing with the fencing issue of how you're going to separate the other lands, what landscape requirements are you going to have for the other property owners that butt up against that? And definitely if they've got wild animals, definitely that's a concern. I think especially with these being three-bedroom fourplexes, that's even more people than versus one or two-bedroom complexes. And I just see this happening more and more where that we're putting people and jamming people into these small spaces because of costs of development and taxes and things like that. What we need to do is reverse why we have that. And a lot of this has to do with international codes, and a lot of those are making for more unsafe development and that leads to these kind of problems down the road. And putting us under any kind of international code is an act of treason. And same thing with the impact these and water and sewer things are impacted that way as well. These guys do a fantastic job in their developments. I really praise Rocky Mountain. They do a wonderful job.
They've made it real long.
So thank you very much, and I share in the name of Jesus.
Would any of the staff like to make a comment?
Merrill Quell, the Public Works Engineer for the City of Pocatello. I will address a couple of the questions that has been brought up, that there were of and what we're planning on. It has been talked about, about the traffic in this area. The traffic generated here will be under around 60 cars at peak hour. That, that it sounds like a lot and it could be for here, but it still falls with under our, our guidelines and standards for having a full traffic study done. Traffic, kind of like a quick analysis and counts were provided and they, the engineer and they matched what, what I have looked at also, so we're consistent there. Hawthorne Road is designed and moving towards to be a collector street, which is bigger than just a residential street. So yes, it does carry a lot of traffic and will continue to carry more traffic as we go on. The Hawthorne and Quinn intersection, they're right currently, there's a project in the process right now, getting through the designs there. And now we're going through land acquisition at this time and finishing up there. This next year, we will start with utilities and then in 2023, I believe, the signal will be placed there. These things and projects take time. So that is the, the plan for Quinn Road and Hawthorne Road intersection. Quinn Road and Philbin Road has been looked at a little bit. The difference there is that it crosses two jurisdictions. So we've got the county and we also got the City of Pocatello. Right now, at this time, there is no plans to continue with projects there or anything there. We'll always keep that on, on the radar as development goes and as we get the traffic counts and traffic analysis through the area. And then we will, there we were aware, brought to our attention about the easement, and we will follow through with that with Rocky Mountain Engineering to make sure title and everything that that easement's there. And if it's there, it will, we'll have it placed on the, on the plat, which is the next agenda item. There is, there is some issues with site distance as far as the sun, when it's shining and so forth, we will continue to analyze that, that further west intersection and driveway there to evaluate that. Double check, but last time we were checking that with the speeds that's posted there, there was enough of the vertical curve and site distance there. But I can relate to the sun coming up and down and I guess fortunately we'll need to adjust, drivers need to adjust for the traffic conditions that are out there, not the same as with snow and so forth, so.
What's the, what's the speed limit right now? Is it 35?
I believe it is 35.
35?
35. Okay, 35 there. As the stuff progresses, it might need to be lowered and everything, but we continue to do those evaluations and change in our ordinances to reflect those changes that are made, so. As far as sewer and water capacity, the city has sewer and water capacity for this development and in this area. There's no concerns there. Garbage pickup, same, the capacity's there. There's planned for two, two dumpster paths there with the three-yard dumpsters, one which we are requesting to have relocated in the staff report in the, in the subdivision, which you'll see next. And then as far as snow removal, the HOA would need to be addressed through the, the developer and representative there. So is there any other questions or I, I believe I wrote down everything. Hopefully I was able to address the questions that were brought up.
Just with the fence, I believe.
They, they will talk about the fence also.
Okay.
Again, Brady Smith, Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. So a couple of the items to tag along with what Merrill said, this will be an HOA-controlled development, even though there will be individual owners potentially, they will all be following the same restrictive covenants and guidelines for how those things are taken care of. And that combined with the fact that there's going to be one entity doing the snow removal, one entity managing the green spaces, it's all going to be taken care of by the homeowners association. So it's not leaving one individual developer out on an island trying to either do better than the other guy or fall behind. So it is managed that way. That's the vision that the, the owner has, is that it's a nice, pleasant, appealing place to live and that it's kept up. So that will be governed by that. So even though they're buying potentially individual units, they will have to follow and fall in line, so everybody's going to be held to the same standard. In terms of the fence, one thing that I'm still unclear of, we have heard about the easement, and I don't know if it's appropriate for, if Mr. Price would be willing to even just show us what side, we're, we're still confused about where the easement falls. We're not saying we wouldn't address or try our best to address it, but is it on our property or your property?
It's on your property.
Yeah, you bet.
It runs right here, right down this fence line right there.
And it's how wide?
You tell me. I don't know how to read those.
Welcome to my world.
You guys did it.
I did it, so you should be able to look it up.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, now that we know where that is, we're, we're definitely willing to work with them to see what we can do to resolve that issue with regards to the easement. As far as the fence goes, we do recognize what, what Mr. Price said about livestock fence versus privacy type, you know, protecting fence, and the owner is willing to provide a privacy fence barrier on that same east line in addition to what they would probably have on the other side. So hopefully, you know, that would, would address the concern there. So that combined with what, you know, Merrill has already spoken to, I do want to mention that we, we always know traffic is an issue, and we actually tried to get out ahead of this one a little bit. We actually consulted with Traffic Engineering from Monticello Lake City, who actually provided some traffic generation data to us. So we do feel pretty comfortable that this is well under the threshold of what would be required to trigger a traffic study, just to kind of add on to what Merrill already said. So we are aware of that, and we did want to reach out and make sure that we identified that so we could have some good data to share with you tonight.
What, what are you classifying as peak hours, like four o'clock, PM?
There's an AM peak and a PM peak. I would assume the AM would be more in the eight o'clock hour in the peak and the PM would be like probably five to six.
Well, I happen to be out there at four-thirtieth today. I'm always last to probably look at all these site visits, but they're fresh on my brain. There was a lot of people out there. I, I didn't think it was too crazy personally, but I know that Connor Academy's on the other side. That can get kind of airy because I've been on that road while school's getting out. But have you done the studies?
Well, so one thing that, and again, it's, it's always the eye to be holder on something like this, so your opinion is certainly going to maybe be different than someone else's or vice versa. But what I can tell you is if you look at a, a car, for instance, and we have 60 peak hour trips, okay? So you could visually say that that's one car per minute.
Yeah.
So what you want to do is say, okay, I'm sitting at a, a piece of the road and I'm going to count for 60 seconds and watch one car come out of that place. That's equivalent to what a 60 hour, a 60 trip, you know, per hour type of thing looks like. So when you kind of look at it that way, it doesn't seem so appalling.
So you're, you're counting it as not people who drive on that road, it's just people that are exiting?
What we're generating to add to that, we actually obviously have no control over what's already currently running on Quinn, but we're saying we're contributing under that 100 peak hour trips, that threshold that actually says you need to study this further to identify other potential means to calm the traffic up the road, down the road, traffic signals, all sorts of things coming into play at that point. So what we're saying is that our peak hour contribution is, is between, you know, I believe it's 36 and 46.
And peak?
AM, AM and PM. 36 AM, 46 PM.
I have a quick question. Why exactly did you guys decide to go with the firewall versus the separate building? I mean, I mean, that really comes to the heart of the matter of this. So I mean, what is the actual reason for that?
So the big reason, I can let the owner speak to it if I don't catch it all, but my understanding is with what we gained in capturing the side yards, we're able to upsize those units to three bedrooms, whereas before we had a mix of about half and half, two-bedroom, three-bedrooms. The, the market demand is really more in the three-bedroom market, so that is one of the reasons that it helps capture, without actually moving your rear, your front and your ends, those can pretty much stay in the same location. So setting back from Quinn Road is, is going to be the same as it was prior, but we're capturing enough space to expand those buildings on the interior enough to, to get another bedroom. Does that, very interesting?
All right, committee, do you have any other questions?
I have a question. And I don't know if there's anyone here that can address it, but I'm curious. Is there any ordinance or law in place of how many people can live in, in an intense, heavy-density unit?
Yeah, I think I can help you on that one. I'm not sure, I think they're written here. I was actually going to highlight it and I did, not just to let you know where the threshold would be and where we're at. Maybe tell him off the top of his head, but if you give me a second, I think I can find it.
So we're allowed 30 units per acre in this development, which would mean we could do 98 units. We have 72. So we're well under what the zoning allows.
Okay, so let me just rephrase it. How, what, is there any law or ordinance that prevents a mother and father of 12 children to purchase one of these?
There's not. Carl, could you address, please?
Carl Anderson again, for the record. So I believe the original question is, is there anything for higher density regulating the amount of people within a unit in a higher-density development?
Thank you.
All dwelling units? All dwelling units, whether they're single family or apartments, are subject to our household standard. That section of code was recently updated. The code I have before me is still working off of our last one. But basically, one person living alone, no more than what is now four unrelated people within an apartment. Here we have three bedrooms. And then other than that, as far as a husband and wife with 12 children, there's nothing that would restrict that. So it's a family related within the second degree of consent in Quinn, you would be. Is that right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Appreciate it. All right. Yes. Please come up to the state, your name again and the question.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, by double eight three two one. In regards to the traffic, is that the ingress egress under international code that we're now under is this old code where it was US? Because that's what I've seen in subdivision. It used to be 50 houses on one interstate road. Now it's 98 or 100.
The staff address your question.
I'm trying to understand the question. I guess.
Would you repeat your question, please?
Well, I think the question was that under one law, under the international law, there's 98. Under Idaho law, there's 50?
It's all under ASHTO and the guidelines and stuff for access and traffic. And that has nothing to do with international codes or anything with traffic. These are national standards created in the United States, ASHTO standards and stuff there. And then we have our benchmarks locally is our 100 peak hour trips, which is through our metropolitan planning organization, our NPO, through Panic Transportation Planning Organization that dictates this. This is the same rules. It's in Chubbick because of our NPO for our region. And then going to the ASHTO, which is a national standard looking there. But I mean, if we had that standard and that, we'd be looking at, say it was over 100 peak hour trips, we'd be doing a more extensive traffic study. And there might be some improvements to the road or different things that's suggested at that time. And then through the city's policies and so forth would be when those improvements would be implemented.
So when, earlier you talked about how Hawthorne, Quinn is going to get a stoplight eventually?
In the next few, couple of years, yes.
Is the plan also to widen Quinn Road all the way down to?
It's being widened every time we do a development through there to become a 60-foot right of way. And that will make provisions as soon as we hit those counts that this could probably, more than likely will turn into a three lane road. So that you've got one lane in each direction and then the turn lanes for the middle there. And we are hoping there'd be enough room there for, you know, a bicycle and make sure there's comfortable for the five foot sidewalks, which are required at this time also. Did I answer those questions? I think I answered some.
Yeah, I think I did. Great.
Thank you, Merrill. So at this particular time, we need to close the deliberations. Done. I declare the public hearing closed. And how do you wish to proceed?
Can discuss.
Commission discussion. Thank you. A commission discussion, please, at this particular time. All right, it's open for discussion.
I'd like to make, say something. So I think this, as our staff pointed out, this application was provided in 2015. And so this was really kind of a renewal because the previous application has expired and they are reapplying. So, and from my perspective, they did explain the only difference from the previous application to the current application, which is to our firewall. And the justification that the builders gave and the owners gave, I think is sufficient because they are taking on commercial risk. They are taking on investment risk. And I believe that their explanation is that they're building this facility because it's a three bedroom facility and that's where the market dictates. So, and it seems like the staff did not mention any safety concerns by switching kind of this areas, separating out the building versus the two hour apartment wall. So I do feel it's, as for other areas, for example, like traffic, et cetera, I do feel that that is outside our purview to a large degree because it is, there is no code infringements. There is, and so it is in accordance to, to the municipal code. That is it. So that is my opinion.
I move to recommend approval of the planned unit development from Jonathan Vincent for the Breezy Apartments, PUD, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 17.02.150 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval that the staff have mentioned. And authorize the chair to sign the findings.
There needs to be a couple of additions, though. There has to be the fence. And also the utility line that has to be on the final plat for Mr. Price and the City of Pocatello that it's noted. So you have to add on that, too.
So I would like to, I guess, recommend and edit to the motion for approval. So it does meet the standards for approval under the chapter 17.02.150 Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval from staff, the easement and the fencing as stated in prior discussion, and authorize the chair to sign the findings of the fact.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Aisling, would you please call the row?
Kirkham, you're in second. White?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion is carried. Do I have to do that again? Okay. Are you sure? Okay, let's move on to our last action item, which is the preliminary plat Trail Creek Vista's fourplex development one. Would the applicant please come forward?
Can we do the Breezy Apartments one first?
Yeah, let's do.
Why did I miss the Breezy Apartment one? I apologize.
Let's do five.
There we go. Brady, thank you.
Good evening, commission members. Brady Smith, Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying, 600 East Oak Street, Pocatello, Idaho. I'll try to keep this one a little even shorter than the last because you just obviously saw this one. So what we're proposing to do here is basically, I guess I need to bring this other preliminary plat. And I have to apologize. I just noticed something. This is a pretty, this has the building still not joined together, but it's more reflective of what's going to actually be built in terms of utilities and streets and stuff. And so as Merrill mentioned before, as part of this project, we're actually needing, we're widening Quinn Road for our frontage. So we're actually going to add additional asphalt and curbing gutter all along our frontage there. So that, the hope would be that as every developer along that road does that, then you get that 60-foot width that he was referring to in the last application. So a couple of the changes that I wanted to mention with regards to this preliminary plat is that all the buildings are obviously going to be served with individual water and sewer services, which will also lend well to it being separated out as we asked for in the PUD, so that each owner has its own meter and servicing that takes place there. The other part is when we last did this back in 2015, we were actually going to take our sewer out a different direction, down into the lower portion of Breezy subdivision. And that is no longer going to happen. So we've worked with the staff. We've identified a plan to take it out into Quinn. So that's a change that we have made since our, you know, previous application some years ago. And then, you know, there will be some incidental things that are going to happen in terms of just making sure we're compliant with the new stormwater regulations and things and just checking those type of requirements. Have to make sure we're still complying with everything. Other than that, it's very much the same as what you saw before you on the last application. We have parking lot, 18 multifamily fourplex units individually served by water and sewer. It's going to be HOA operated. One common set of rules for everyone to follow. Those types of things that were discussed in terms of, you know, the requirements, I think, about fencing and stuff like that, obviously those conditions will be applied here in terms of that fencing. And I believe that the owner was planning on doing fencing in other places as well. So we're well aware of that. Other than that, I really don't have too much more to add. It's, you know, what you see is kind of what you're going to get. It's pretty much the same as what you saw in the last item. But if you have to answer any questions, it's not.
So in her paper, it's the right way?
Yeah.
So it's cool.
I grabbed the wrong one. I put it on my hard drive. I just noticed that.
No, you're totally fine. So I got.
So the package should be right because we did try and get Carl the new layout.
There are. They are.
Yeah.
So if you are putting meters on all of them individually, each unit's their own, this is just to help me out, right? So let's say five years from now they want to resell them. Can you resell each unit as an individual if they're connected still?
In terms of like if all those five were on one meter?
Or because there are going to be five separate meters, right?
They are.
Yeah. So can you, let's say one person only wants to buy two of the five, can they buy two of the five or since they're all connected?
No, that's the idea. So that's why we kept them on their own lots and their own individual service. It's for that very reason. So they'll have their own meter. If they buy two, they'll have two meters to take care of. They could buy all five, but they wouldn't necessarily need to.
Any other questions, commission? All right. Thanks, Brady.
Thank you.
Carl?
Good evening again. Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello, for the record. Before you for consideration, you have before you the Breezy Point Apartments subdivision preliminary plat submitted by Jonathan Vincent, the city builders, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying. This subject subdivision is contingent upon the approval of the planned unit development application, and the density and lot design is subject to the planned unit development approval. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this property into 23 total lots, including 18 residential, and the remaining five of which would be dedicated as common area. This common area will provide for parking, open space and stormwater retention as previously stated. The required parking for the development will be provided a shared parking area within Lot 22. Now draw your attention to condition number three, which states that this area must be left unobstructed. Since the completion of the staff report, it has come to staff's attention that there may be a utility easement located along the eastmost property line. Staff recommends that a condition be added that the applicant shall work with the adjacent property owner to verify the exact location of the easement prior to this middle of the final plat. Staff has reviewed this application and finds the proposed Breezy Apartments subdivision is compliant with all applicable standards of city code 16.20.050, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report and the additional condition that the easement be addressed. This concludes my presentation and I'll have your standing questions.
Any questions?
I did have a quick question. So what if the easement does require them to move the everything just a couple of feet or something? Will that really affect the plans?
They'll still need to meet their setback requirements. So some of those lines might need to be adjusted.
Has there been any additional correspondence?
None of this one, as it's not public.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain testimony by those who are supporting the application.
This is not public.
This is the softer now.
I move to approve, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application from Jonathan Vincent for the Breezy Apartments, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval from staff.
Do I hear a second?
I will second the motion.
Aisling, would you please call the row?
White? Moore?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
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 Okay, I hereby call this meeting at end.
We got one more.
We got one more.
Oh, I know. That one. Sorry. My agenda, agenda item number six now. Are you all happy with it, six? Okay. Agenda item number eight or six, excuse me. Preliminary plat, Trail Creek Vista's fourplex development one. McCormick Ranch LLC, represented by RAMES, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 3.39 acres, or is it 3.34? 3.34 acres more or less into 17 lots. The proposed subdivision is located south of North Craft Road and west of North Gathie Road. At this time, we'll open this, use the, excuse me. Can't play that now. Okay. This presentation by the applicant, Dan.
Thank you. My name's Mitchell Greer with Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying, 600 East Oak. So the project that we're considering right now is, we're calling it the Trail Creek Vista's fourplex project. There's 13 initial units within this project. They're all multifamily units, fourplexes, so four individual apartments per building, 13 buildings on the, in this project. There are a couple of open space projects or spaces within the project that will be dedicated for stormwater and other things. Ultimately, this project is intended to extend on to the north that you'll see in future divisions as we bring this to fruition. For those of you that are not familiar with this overall project, we, our client owns pretty much a lot of the remaining property associated with kind of the west bench as we, as we know it, kind of the northern part of the west bench. They're the ones, really the only ones actively developing on the west side of town right now. So it is kind of a nice thing. That Trail Creek project is in this location. We are bringing another division, Trail Creek Four, that we brought in, and we'll have some more divisions that will come. Ultimately, the goal is to connect Trail Creek over into Gathie Road and the Holy Spirit path site that used to be planned for the Holy Spirit Church community. And then long term, this Foothill Boulevard will extend to the north and tie into Craft Road here. So that's been part of the long-term planning. So as it goes north, it'll tie into this, kind of somewhere in this location. The exact location has not been determined, but we do have plans for that to extend up to the north. And we've, we've got some preliminary designs, but there's still some, some ownership issues that need to be worked out in that last little section. So what's, what's great about that is many of you have probably been out to Craft Road and you can kind of see in this location that there's kind of an unsafe situation where Gathie or Foothill ties right in close to Craft Road there. And so as, you know, as this intersection gets busy, it's very difficult to kind of maneuver through there. So what?
So what we've done, again, this started with the Catholic Church back in 2008, has started the process to realign that area and fix some of that problem. As you see, you know, future development on that Hoku site and things like that, that will become more and more important as that, as that development traffic increases. And we hope that it does. You know, again, it will be good for the city, it will be good for that area to see things happen. So, again, back to our project. Now you have a little bit of an overview. We did do a traffic, a full traffic impact study. Again, that was at considerable expense. I think it's probably one of the, one of the only ones, you know, we've been developing in Pocatello for a number of years. And it's really one of the only traffic, full-blown traffic impact studies we've done in all that time. And that, you know, we've done a lot of analysis and evaluations and different things. And so one of the real, really only critical things that came out of that traffic impact study, which was kind of nice to see, is that we need to do the road as we'd always considered that needed to be done. So that's kind of, you know, that kind of speaks a lot to staff. Even though we didn't do a full-blown traffic impact study, we've been really working toward that direction for a long time. So, there was some minor improvements that were recommended kind of in some of the old-town intersections associated with the Trail Creek project as a whole, maybe further, more removed from this particular project in itself. So, again, I think this is going to be a nice addition for this area. It's zoned for this type of use. We're under the densities that are allowed presently. The project meets the review criteria and is compliant with the codes for approval in the city. And I think I've just asked that you evaluate the project and hopefully give us your approval as we believe it meets the code and will be a nice addition to the city. So I can ask the questions if you have them. If not, we just ask for you to approve it.
Any questions, Commission? Okay, thank you. We will now entertain a public testimony. I'll have to ask, remind me, ask that question to you later, okay? All right, now we'd like to hear from staff. Thank you, Carl.
Good evening again, Chairman, members of the Commission. Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello, Planning for the Record. Before you further consideration, you have a proposed preliminary plat for Trail Creek Vista's fourplex development, Division One. This request was submitted by McCormick Ranch LLC, the engineer listed on the applicant is Rocky Mountain Engineering Surveying. This proposed subdivision is located south of North Craft Road and west of North Gathie Road. The proposal calls for the plating of 3.34 acres, more or less, into 17 lots, four of which are proposed to be dedicated to stormwater retention. And the property is also zoned residential, commercial, professional. The remaining 13 lots will have one fourplex apartment building on each lot. The RCP zoning just requires a minimum lot size of 1,452 square feet per multifamily dwelling unit. Thus, the minimum lot size required for each lot is 5,808 square feet. And the smallest billable lot is 6,530 square feet. The required parking for the development will be provided in a shared parking area spanning portions of all lots within the subdivision. I would again draw your attention to condition number three here in that the parking area must be left unobstructed. The proposed subdivision will be accessed from North Gathie Road at the northeast section of the subject land area. The proposal will facilitate the expansion of Foothill Drive to the northwest, which will provide for two additional access points to the subject land and allow for further development. Staff has reviewed the application and finds the proposed Trail Creek Vista's fourplex development is compliant with all applicable standards of City Code 16.20.050, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Has there been any additional correspondence?
We've had web phone calls and applications.
Very good. All right, now we entertain the testimony by those who saw.
No.
I'm going to play my rules.
Entertain a motion from the Commission. You can open it up for discussion.
Okay, now we'll go through the discussion. Commission, do you have anything to say?
Looks good.
Anyone else?
I did have a quick question for the applicant.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mitchell. Now, this is like an apartment complex, or is this, I mean, is there an HOA or?
There will be an HOA, very similar to the other development that we talked about. These units, so the way it works now is kind of investor-related properties. There's a lot of people looking for investment properties in the kind of commercial sector. This is a place where people can invest in real estate that's still successful. As you probably are aware, kind of, a lot of the commercial real estate investment opportunities are kind of shrinking in our area, certainly in America in general, because a lot of the stores are kind of downsizing, you hear the news about that. And so, a lot of the investment people that are looking for that real estate investment are kind of going to these types of projects now. And so that's why you see, you know, a number of those. The other reason is obviously there's a need for those types of units in our, in our community because that's where a number of people need to live. And so what happens is someone like me can't afford a 13-unit apartment complex because, you know, the investment associated with that might be, you know, several million dollars. And so what I could afford maybe is one, yeah, 1, 1, 1 fourplex or something like that. And so that's a much more reasonable investment. And so what happens is you can, you can reach out to, you know, a larger pool of investors. They can, they can add their money together and be able to take on a project like this rather than just one, one sole owner. And so you develop that association. And a lot of the projects that we do take it even further in that they're managed as a whole entity. So, the revenues even split within the project. So, if there's a vacancy in your next-door neighbor's apartment, you're not out there dropping your rent down five bucks so somebody rents yours instead of his, everybody rents at the same level. So, if there's vacancies, everybody shares in the revenue, everybody shares in the vacancies, everybody shares in the maintenance. So if you, if you happen to rent to a bad tenant or something in one of your buildings, they tear it up, you know, the association maintains or takes care of the whole thing. So at the end of the day, you might not make as much, you might get lucky and you had great renters in your unit. At the end of the day, you might make a little bit less, but it reduces the risk of the investment and it increases the overall maintenance. I'm not saying that's how this is going to be operated. I think that hasn't been sought through as much yet. But in, we've done a number of projects where that's how they, how they're managed and operated.
All right.
So even though there's individual owners, they're managed as a group.
All right, well, that just answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So can I also make a comment?
Certainly.
I know we're, and I think this is more for the lady who made a comment before with regards to concerns of various housing units, I think. I just wanted to confirm that there is a housing shortage in the city, right? There is, you know, currently the market is that there's a lack of housing units within the city as the city grows, as I know the city is currently growing. And I'm wondering if the staff, you know, do we have any housing models that kind of typically predict, you know, the rate of population growth and the amount of available housing units, et cetera, moving forward for the city?
So I would like to state, and surely, you know, Carl, feel free to come up, that with planning and zoning, we're looking at the applications and seeing that they, that the applicants, you know, meet the needs and the requirements of those applications. And then, you know, from there on out, you know, we approve or deny.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions from the Commission? None? All right, we will go ahead and open it up then to test.
No.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application from McCormick Ranch LLC for the Trail Creek Vista's fourplex development, Division One, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under Chapters 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the staff conditions.
Oh, like a second?
Aisling, would you please call the roll?
Moore?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that concludes our meeting for today.